I'd like to call this meeting of the County of Placer Planning Commission for August 12th, 2021 to order, and we begin with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Sue, if you would call the roll, please.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Di Mattei.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Sevison?
Oh, here.
Thank you. Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 931-2949-5434. Please press pound six to mute yourself. I'm sorry, star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you were calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, if the planning director would provide his report.
Great. Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. EJ Ivaldi with Planning Services Division. So I'll start out with some, some good news this morning. So as you know, earlier this year, your commission recommended approval, and the Board of Supervisors approved the Housing Element update for the 2021 through 2029 eight-year planning period. Last Friday, we received written confirmation from HCD that the adopted housing element has been found to be in full compliance with state housing element law. So thank you to your commission, to our Board of Supervisors, Shawna Purvines, you're in the audience, to Shawna and our housing team to get that across the finish line. So that's a, that's a, a good one for the county. The downside to that, now we have to implement that. There's a lot of work ahead. For board meetings, the Rancho del Oro map modification appeal, map modification appeal was considered by the Board of Supervisors on July 26. That appeal was denied and modification was approved. One of the discussion items during that hearing was in regards to some unauthorized tree removal that occurred on a few of the residential lots prior to the hearing. So staff was asked to return to the board with an accounting of tree impacts and any assessment of mitigation fees. On August 31st, staff will be providing an update to the board on the 2021 redistricting process and timeline. I'll talk about upcoming dates for the Advisory Redistricting Commission, which is all of you, just in a few minutes here. And then lastly, for board items, the KIM CUP modification appeal is tentatively scheduled for the September 14th board meeting. Any questions on board items? Okay. For Planning Commission, our next meeting, August 26th, we're going to be canceling that meeting. That's August 26th. Staff is currently meeting right now internally discussing the housing-related code amendments. That was presented at the July 22nd meeting. We will probably bring that back before you in late September, and that can be for either an action item or a discussion item again. If there's a discussion item, there'd be a follow-up meeting in October. So I'd like to get your thoughts on that, if I could. But I'll finish up with the other hearing dates coming up for Planning Commission before I do that. So there will be both meetings in September right now, September 9th, September 23rd. For the Advisory Redistricting Commission meeting, the tentative dates right now, that's where, let's see, tentative dates are October 14th and November 4th. I think we are required to have one of those as an evening meeting. So right now, tentatively, we're looking at the November 4th for that evening meeting.
What time would that be in the evening?
Well, it's probably whatever we decide is most appropriate, whether that's a 5:00 meeting or 6:00 meeting. I would guess it's going to be in that timeframe.
Okay.
And we might hear more from the board once that goes to them on the 31st. So a lot of stuff coming up in the fall. So for the housing-related code amendments, any thoughts on whether you would like staff to bring that package back as a call for action at an upcoming meeting, or, or do you feel like there's a need to have one more discussion about, you know, our responses to some of the comments that came up last time, to package it up for a final consideration at a subsequent hearing?
Pleasure of the commission.
Great. So we'll probably be looking at, if that's the case, anybody, any other comments I should ask?
I don't see any other comments, and I would concur. I think the action would be appropriate.
Okay. So we'll, we'll package, package it together. If we can get everything done by the second meeting in September, we'll do that, or possibly it'd be the next meeting. But I think we're working diligently to get that completed right now. So anyway, that's helpful. That's all I have for my report. So thank you.
EJ, can we go back? You're only thinking two meetings of the Redistricting Commission?
That's my understanding right now. I don't know if Clayton, if you knew, have any other different information?
Yeah, no, that's my understanding as well. With the shortened timeline, just we're limited on the available, on the number of meetings that we can have, with the understanding that it's going to go to this committee and then also go to the board, and the board may have input and decisions as well. So I think we're, we're talking about, I think, five to six weeks of timing to, to get the information in, create the maps, and go through this committee and also the board and get approvals. So yeah, at this point, we're at two. If, if after two, this, the committee feels like it needs more time, we may be able to set up a special meeting or something like that. But as of right now, it's planned for two, given the short window.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. You mentioned September 14th, and I guess I missed what was on that date.
Oh, that's a board, yeah, the Board of Supervisors meeting for the KIM CUP, so not a Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, that's not us.
Right.
I have one question. For the maps, you said we're good for the redistricting. Are those maps going to be taken into consideration for the census, or is that a new map considering what's really happening in today's world with all the new construction in Lincoln and Rockland and Roseville? Will those maps include all of those new permits and things that are being built right now that the census is not going to take in?
Right. So the, the maps will be based off the census data. There is some flexibility with respect to that, those districting maps. There needs to be a five cent, 5% or less standard deviation between districts. So to the extent that there is, I guess, perception or belief that, that areas are going to grow, you could potentially, I guess, put those districts in kind of a smaller population percentage with the expectation that over the next 10 years, they're going to increase and, and kind of more level out. But the, the short answer is that it is based on the census data.
So along with that map, can we get maps of what's being developed out there right now? They're putting sticks in the ground across from the airport, which are not going to be in this map. So it's really not going to tell us what's happening today. This is telling us what happened two years ago and yesterday to help relocate all these, you know, district lines.
Yeah, but we'll certainly notify staff of that request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Could I, one follow-up question, EJ, on the housing element related. Would it make sense to provide the other commissioners the questions that we put forward from District One to, or District Four, I should say, so that they can take a look at those?
Certainly. Yeah, we can make those available. I'll have Sue send those out to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Is that it? Okay. I saw your writing there. I figured that's important, get it down. All right. I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom with a raised hand? Okay.
Mr. Garabedian, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning, planning commissioners. Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. I've been interested in the question of how many times a year the county can amend the general plan. And so I've begun to look into that, especially parts of 65400 of the state government code. The, but, but I think I'll get to that later on the, the next agenda item. What I'm curious about is the annual report required by the planning department, planning division to the state. And part of that report, it looks like it was amended effective January 2020, is supposed to be a listing of the sites owned by the county and included in an inventory that had been sold, leased, or otherwise disposed of in the prior year. And then there's 65401, including sites owned by the city or the county and so forth. So I'm, I'm just curious about that specific aspect, if, if that is included in annual reports to the state. If there's an answer now, great, or if not, I'll look forward to finding out when we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? No other raised hands. So with no other comment, the public comment for matters not on the agenda is now closed. EJ, do you want to respond on the annual progress report?
So I mean, we, the county has a responsibility to prepare all sorts of annual progress reports on a variety of things, you know. I'm not certain what Mr. Garabedian is asking specifically, but I'd be happy to entertain that, those questions offline, so I can find out exactly what he's, what he's looking at.
Okay. So Mr. Garabedian, if you would contact EJ, I get the sense, EJ, he's talking about the general plan APR, which is due April of every year.
Yeah. You want to speak to that, Shawna, or real quick?
Okay, Shawna. Good morning. Oh, microphone.
Good morning, Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resource Agency. So recent change in state law now requires all jurisdictions to submit a surplus land report as part of their annual housing element progress report to the state. So each jurisdiction is required to review their lands and then determine if any are surplus and go through the process to surplus them and then provide them to the state. So the county did do that, and we do do that on a regular basis. At this time, during the last report, we just didn't have any properties that we had deemed surplus land and provide that report, but we continue to look at that, and we'll provide it annually.
Question. I've never seen that report come to the commission, and I know it is kind of interesting because you have to document what have you done towards implementing your general plan, what's lacking, what's not, and especially now, way too much information on housing.
Sure, sure.
Overwhelming.
So we, we do take two reports to the board, one kind of a mid-year in March, and that went, I believe, March 27th to the board up at their Tahoe meeting. I mean, we do tend to focus on Tahoe a little bit as part of that mid-year report, but it is a countywide report. And then we're actually preparing the annual report that will go to the board here in September, and I'm happy to bring that report to the Planning Commission as well.
I think it's just interesting, you know, information, so we know what's happening with the general plan.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could?
Yes.
There, oh, nothing for you, Shawna. There, there was a comment by Mr. Garabedian about general plan amendments and how many are allowed.
Oh, yes, correct.
Just if I could respond to that. It's four per calendar year, and the, the section that requires that is government code 65358.
And how many has the county made so far?
We had done two.
One or two.
One or two. Okay. And as I recall, that's calendar year, so.
That is correct. Yep.
All right. All right. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioner like to remove the one item from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public want to remove the item from the consent agenda, which is the action agenda from last meeting? Anyone with a raised hand or anyone in the audience? Seeing none. So at this point in time, would ask for action or motion from the commission?
Mr. Mr. Cannon, motion for approval.
Okay, have a motion for approval. Also, your microphone is much better. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second for approval of the consent agenda item. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Cannon, a second from Mr. Hersog, I believe.
Correct.
So vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Di Mattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We are moving on to our first timed item, the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Property 1B Specific Plan Amendment, an amendment to the Second Amended and Restated Development Agreement. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment in this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Callie Kendiger Cecil, senior planner, will be presenting this item. Is she online?
I don't mind. So Callie's going to be presenting remotely today.
Okay.
So let's see if we can get her on.
All right, can you guys hear and see me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Callie Kendiger Cecil with the Planning Services Division. The item before you is a request for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on a specific plan amendment for property 1B in the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. Next slide, please. The Placer Vineyard Specific Plan is located south of Baseline Road and west of Alarca Road in unincorporated western Placer County. Property 1B, shown in gray, is located in the northeastern portion of the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, east of Wada Avenue. Next slide, please. Property 1B, shown here outlined in blue, is approximately 56 acres in its own specific plan. This site is currently leased for cattle grazing, and an approximate three-acre portion of the property contains a residence and outbuildings. The site has flat terrain, and grassland is the dominant vegetation type. Three vernal pools and a drainage swale are located on site. Next slide, please. The Placer Vineyard Specific Plan was initially approved in 2007 and amended in 2012, 2015, and 2019. This plan underwent a comprehensive environmental review process, including certification of a, of a final environmental impact report, and adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The EIR is a programmatic document which evaluates the effects of broad proposals that include a wide range of projects, are implemented over a long timeframe, or are implemented across a large geographical area. The Placer Vineyard Specific Plan area is 5,230 acres. The specific plan recognizes the timeframe for implementing the scale of the project, and the introduction section of the plan notes that the document is designed as a framework of policies, guidelines, and standards which shall guide the build-out of the plan area expected to occur over a period of 20 to 30 years. SEQUA Guidelines considers projects that are undertaken subsequent to approval of a certified EIR. As the properties in the specific plan develop, specific project-level SEQUA review is undertaken to identify if the subsequent projects would result in new or more severe impacts than identified in the EIR. If new or more severe impacts would result from a project, then additional review, such as a subsequent EIR, would be required. If the circumstances noted in SEQUA Guidelines Section 15162 have not occurred, then no subsequent environmental impact report would be required. In order to demonstrate whether a subsequent project would require further analysis, a checklist for conformity review has been created for subsequent projects in the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan per SEQUA Guidelines Section 15182 through 15183. SEQUA does not intend for continuous reanalysis of the initial environmental review, and case that requires that projects are analyzed for their impacts to the environment and not impacts from the environment to a project. A number of master plans have also been approved. I'm not going to read through this entire list. I'll just note on a couple. That includes a transit master plan, urban services financing plan, implementation policies and procedures manual, and a development phasing plan. The purpose of these plans is to further refine and guide project implementation. Next slide, please. The project before you this morning is a proposal to amend the specific plan relative to property 1B to eliminate the low-density residential and high-density residential uses, reduce the acreage of the religious site, increase the open space allocation, and modify the onsite circulation patterns. This figure shows the approved specific plan on the left compared to the proposed amendment on the right. An east-west connector would be eliminated, and Town Center Drive would be modified to accommodate the larger open space area. The high-density residential is shown in dark brown. The medium-density residential is shown in gold. The low-density residential is shown in yellow. The open space is green, and the religious land use is blue. This project is also proposing to amend the development agreement to reflect the land use changes. No development is proposed with this specific plan amendment. Next slide, please. The proposed land use changes are in response to environmental impact statement prepared by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as required by the National Environmental Protection Act, for the Placer Vineyard Section 404 Clean Water Act programmatic permit. The EIS identified five focused avoidance areas throughout the plan area where additional avoidance of aquatic resources could occur. Property 1B was identified as one such avoidance area where three large vernal pools and a drainage swale currently exist. This figure shows the avoidance area in yellow. Next slide, please. In order to accommodate the increase in open space, adjustments are required to be approved land uses. This table shows those changes. This project proposes to eliminate the low-density and high-density residential uses, increase the amount of medium-density residential by 11.6 acres, reduce the religious site from nine acres to 0.6 acres, and increase the amount of open space for a total of 19 acres. The associated roadway changes would reduce 2.2 acres dedicated to roadway uses. The proposed land use changes would not increase or decrease the overall unit count of 253 dwelling units that are approved for property 1B. Next slide, please. An addendum to the previously certified environmental impact report was prepared in accordance with SEQUA guidelines for projects where an EIR has been certified. Per SEQUA, the county must determine whether the proposed changes to the specific plan would trigger the need for a subsequent EIR. Several reports were prepared to determine if the amendment would result in new or more significant impacts. This includes a subsequent conformity review questionnaire, a rezoned fiscal impact analysis, a traffic memo, a drainage memo, and a sanitary sewer dwelling unit equivalent and flow summary. The result of these reports show that the proposed amendment would not result in new or more significant impacts than those found in the environmental impact report. No changes to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program are required, and no changes to the adopted master plans would be required based on the amendment. The proposed changes would not impact sewer capacity, would not increase the amount of vehicle trips, and would not have an appreciable impact on the onsite drainage patterns, nor require additional storage capacity. The land use changes would not affect the project's financing, and no additional utilities or facilities are required. A detailed SEQUA analysis would occur when development is proposed. Next slide, please. Shown here is the proposed amendment to the development agreement. Exhibit 2.2 would be modified to reflect the proposed land use changes. Next slide, please. Staff has considered the proposed amendment's consistency with the approved specific plan and determined that the amendment would be consistent. No new land uses are proposed, and the residential character envisioned for the site would be maintained. The increase in open space for additional aquatic resource protection is consistent with specific plan goals and policies for open space creation, community buffers, and natural resource protection. The total unit count of 253 units is not changing. Next slide, please. This project was presented at the July 21st West Placer Municipal Advisory Council meeting. MAC members raised questions about the reduction in religious land use, and a member of the public made a comment regarding the number of amendments proposed in the specific plan. The MAC voted unanimously to recommend the Planning Commission approve the proposed amendment. Next slide, please. Staff requests the Planning Commission take action to recommend the following to the Board of Supervisors. The first is to adopt a resolution adopting an addendum to the certified Placer Vineyard Specific Plan final EIR, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. The second is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And the final action requested this morning is to adopt an ordinance approving a second amendment to the Second Amended and Restated Development Agreement by and between the County of Placer and Hodal Family Enterprises LP relative to property 1B, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions, and the applicant team is also present for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff from the commission members? No? Actually, Callie, I do have a question for you. One of the things in past commission members is the religious sites, that they were basically something that the county received with that specific plan. And one of the questions we want answered, and I didn't see it in your findings, is what benefit is the county receiving by the removal of those religious lands?
I'm sorry, can you repeat just that last sentence? What benefit is the county receiving from what?
What benefits is the county receiving with this amendment with the removal of the religious properties?
So overall, the benefits to the county are the increase in open space creation. That's not specific to the reduction in the religious land use, but I would note that the adjacent property to the north does have a religious site that is adjacent to the religious site on property 1B. So that site would be able to be developed with a religious use. And in addition, religious uses are allowed in all of the land uses in this specific plan. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, is the applicant here and want to make a statement?
Good morning. My name is Eric Crowe. I am the land planner representing property 1B. On behalf of property 1B and the team, I'd just like to say thank you to staff, to Callie for her presentation, and thank you for hearing our item this morning. We have no formal presentation, but we're here and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Does the commission have questions of the applicant? Not? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to make a comment? All right. And I see we have a hand raised on Zoom, so Sue?
Mr. Garabedian, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. So on the question of the number of a plan, the plan elements, and I also want to address transportation, that I'm not aware has been addressed in perhaps what's the manner needed. It, the statute that the county council referred to, 65358, it does say four are permitted a year, and that more than one change can be in each amendment. So the question is, is this one amendment in itself, or is this part of another grouping of amendments, or, or do, do we know? of amendments, or do we know? So, the transportation issue is that the fellow who organized the various properties for Placer Vineyards explained to me that there was no question that Watt Avenue would be widened in Sacramento County to address the transportation needs. And now, my understanding is that that is not going to happen, but I don't know. But the question is, has that been looked at? And if that change in the anticipated transportation access been dealt with? And also, now, related to that may be the proposal to widen baseline out to State Route 99, which has had a plan, the initial planning document prepared by the, either the Placer County Transportation Agency or the South Region, SPADA, South Placer Regional Transportation Agency or Authority. So, there seems to be a serious question about transportation access for Placer Vineyards in general that would also include this. So those are my two comments and inquiries expressing concern about this general plan amendment, which is part of the larger concern about the plethora of amendment after amendment after amendment to the Placer Vineyards' specific plan, which seems overboard. But thank you very much for this opportunity to participate, and I appreciate the staff presentation, the information from that.
Right, thank you so much. Are there other comments on Zoom?
Not at this time.
No other comments, so with that, we'll close the public comment period. Staff, there were some questions that were raised. Who's going to answer those about Watt Avenue, number of general plan changes, and transportation access?
Actually, I can speak on behalf of the general plan amendments. This is a specific plan amendment, which is not categorized as a general plan amendment. So a general plan amendment under that statute would apply to anything that modifies a general plan or any of the community plans, but a specific plan is a lower-level plan that isn't included in that category. So it wouldn't count towards one of the four general plan amendments.
All right.
As far as the traffic and access, I'm not sure if we have anybody from DPW on the line. Callie, I don't think so, but maybe the applicant can respond to the...
I can also provide a response. Neither Watt Avenue or baseline road are within or adjacent to property 1B. The traffic memorandum that was prepared for this amendment was specific to the land use changes within property 1B. That traffic memorandum determined that the proposed land use changes would result in a reduction of traffic associated, but it's just with property 1B. So that's the answer that I wanted to provide to you today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. At this time, I want to bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any discussion? And if, I don't see any discussion, a motion, please. We're going to have a motion?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Woodward.
I'm glad to make a motion.
All right.
And I need to read through all three of these, is that right?
One at a time.
One at a time, okay. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting an amendment or an addendum to the certified Placer Vineyards' specific plan final environmental impact report, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
If I may, before we get a second on that, these are going to be recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So, I know it's understood, but just wanted to include that in the motion.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second? Sue, if you would call, roll.
I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Dematte. So, a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I move that we recommend to the board that they adopt a resolution approving amendments to the Placer Vineyards' specific plan, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second? Roll call?
First from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Dematte. A vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
A third, I move that we recommend to the board that they adopt an ordinance approving a second amendment to the second amended and restated development agreement by and between the County of Placer and Hodel Family Enterprises LP relative to the property 1B, relative to property 1B, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second? Roll call, please.
A first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Dematte. A vote for Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are moving on to our second timed item, the Tree Pro Tree Service Temporary Conditional Use Permit. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you are calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Adam Anderson, Assistant Planner, will be presenting the item.
Good morning, Chairman Haugie and fellow planning commissioners. I am Adam Anderson. I'm representing the Planning Services Division. Now, we will be presenting this staff report for the Tree Pro Tree Service Temporary Conditional Use Permit this morning.
Ooh. Maybe.
Or not. Maybe. It was a short one, huh?
Jeremy didn't want you talking, I guess. There we go.
We'll wait for that to get back up.
Can anyone see if the projector is on?
It's not on yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, little red light.
Still not on?
Nope.
I guess we have the screen over there, so you could talk to the screen.
That'll work. I don't know if this will move the item forward. Oh, it will. Oh. Can everybody see that clearly?
So the question is, does people on Zoom see that? How can we tell?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Kair is going to check for us. If we have public who cannot see this or hear this on Zoom, then we'd have to repeat. I think that happened at our last meeting, where there was a segment where the Zoom, and we had to go back, so we'll wait.
No problem.
See where they might... So for those listening, we're holding until we confirm that this is available on Zoom.
You're at 17, 18, 19.
Okay, so everyone can see, so, all right. Proceed, please.
Okay, so, the Tree Pro Tree Service Temporary Conditional Use Permit. The site itself is located in the OFER area. You'll see that it is approximately one mile north from Interstate 80. It is wedged in between Lozanos Road, can't see a pointer on this, but it's wedged between Lozanos Road, Chili Hill Road, and then Bald Hill is on the east of the site. It is part of the OFER general plan, and this is a image of the community plan and the zoning overlay. So the community plan for the area is the OFER general plan. That indicates the blue text for rural residential, 2.3 to 4.6 acre minimum, and then also the commercial designation down here. I would direct your attention to the orange line, which is the property boundaries, and I would also direct you to the green line. The green line is the boundary of the zoning and in the general plan for what portion is commercial versus what portion is residential agricultural. The minimum lot size in the commercial area is B43 or one acre, whereas the minimum lot size in the residential agricultural area is 2.3 acre minimum or 100,000 square feet. I would also indicate that we have Lozanos Road that comes down here and Bald Hill Road that crosses on the other side. This is a site plan for the location. Access for the site is granted through Lozanos right here. They do cross through an existing commercial use, and then the site does include employee parking area, includes an equipment storage area, a storage container, chip storage area, and it also includes a fence that the applicant has placed between their property and Lozanos Road that runs here. That fence is approximately six feet high and is solid. You'll see a photo of it later. I would also like to direct that the boundary line, the one that did occur here, has been shifted as of 7/8 to this line here. This is approximate, it was, I don't have an available map for it at this time, it was recorded, and so there was not, they did not provide a data sheet. That boundary line shift created two separate lots, where now the existing commercial use is for American well drilling is completely separate than the proposed use for Tree Pro Tree Services. I would also want to bring your attention to the homes that are listed here, starting from the north. There is a home approximately 40 feet from property line. To the east, there's a home 130 feet, and then there are two more homes approximately 90 feet from the western property line along Lozanos. This is an aerial image of the site. I would want to bring your attention to the existing grove of trees here that are located in the center of the site. It was the applicant's and property owner's goal to not have to remove these trees. The approximate division between what section is commercial versus what section is residential agricultural runs right along here. And that's also available in the community plan. The zoning line and the non-conforming use would be for the use up here of the storage area. If it had been located in, below the zoning line, it would have been a minor use permit. I would also want to indicate that there are other non-conforming uses in this area, namely, there is a home in this tree cover, there is a home in this tree cover, and there is a home here. Those are all non-conforming to the current zoning, which calls for commercial in those sites. But all of those sites were developed between 1928 and 1960, so, non-conforming to the zoning, but conforming to the zoning at the time that they were created. All right. So the site has been used by Tree Pro Tree Services since 2010 as a storage yard. We have discussed that there is split zoning between the two and indicated where that line is, but the actual demarcation in the community plan calls for the designation of community or of commercial area to be the intersection of Lozanos and Chili Hill Road as commercial area intended to serve the needs of the OFER property owners. The use of the site as a storage yard is not allowed within the residential agricultural zone. We can allow that use in any zone, provided we have an approval of a temporary conditional use permit. The temporary conditional use permit is, can be approved for a maximum of one year within this zone, and there is a possibility for a one-year extension as well. The project was in, was brought to us via code enforcement complaint. We received one complaint, and that is what brought us to the notice of violation that was issued January 22. The applicant, Fred Lowe, has begun working with the county from that date and has completed a, submitted a completed application for the temporary conditional use permit, which was accepted as of April 15. Since that time, the county has been working with the applicant to create conditions for the site to operate that would address the concerns of the use and its impacts on the So the storage yard itself is for equipment related to the tree trimming service. The equipment is limited to chippers, a skid steer, lifts, a water tank trailer, some equipment trailers, and dump trailers. The service removes hazardous trees for both public and private properties. The parking required on-site is for six to eight employees. They will arrive at the site in the morning at 7:00, and they will take their equipment off-site to be used throughout the county. And then they will return at the site at approximately 4:00 to exchange equipment and go home. Restroom facilities are being offered through the adjacent commercial use, American well drilling to the south. They have a bathroom, and they have agreed to allow the site to use their bathroom for employee use. The site operation, as I said, is 7 through 4, but it is going to be limited to Monday through Friday. No weekend activity will be occurring on the site. And the stockpile of the raw wood debris that is, that would be occurring on the site would be limited in height, no more than six feet in high, 75 feet wide, and 255 feet in length. And the processing of wood materials with the chipper would also be limited to no more than two hours a day between the hours of 10 and 3. So there are some, some existing surrounding land uses. We mentioned American well drilling to the south. They do operate a warehouse and storage yard for their vehicles. And that, there are also existing residences to the northeast and west, and the residential properties is all zoned to the north of this parcel, whereas commercial properties are zoned to the east, west, and south. There are buffers that have been created to provide some aesthetic relief, namely, the fencing that has been put in place between Lozanos Road and the site. There is also going to be vegetation management that would limit any fire concerns for the site. There are stockpiles that would be limited in size, and they're also supposed to be set off from the property lines by 20 feet to provide fire break for conditions from the fire department. We also are limiting the chipping activity that will primarily be occurring off-site, but there will be limited to their noise for the, for the area. They will also be limited in where they can occur, or where that chipping can occur. They will have to perform that ability, or that use more at the center of the site to try and limit the amount of impacts it would be for neighboring properties. And also, the Placer County general plan, it does call for wildfire reduction as a goal in the health and safety element under Goal E. California governor has repeatedly issued emergency proclamations detailing the severity of fire danger in communities, and the project contributes to the overall fuel reduction in the community. Hazardous storage of materials would be all in locked compartments, so there shouldn't be any access to that when, when nobody is on the site. Air quality, air quality does list that the fuels that would normally be burned or left on properties have been properly managed by Tree Pro, and that would reduce the air pollution and fire risk loads. The, there are also tons of chips that Tree Pro does haul off-site to a Lincoln cogeneration facility to generate power. And, these are some photos of the site. This is namely the entrance just north of American well drilling. That is their, their gate here that will include a NOx box for fire access after hours, and their proposal sign. This is that fence that I discussed along the western side of the property. Lozanos Road is on the other side. This is the wood chip storage area, and Lozanos Road is here. This is the neighboring residence as well. This is the neighboring residence to the east. It's pretty screened by trees, but it is back here. This is a garden structure for them. And then this is a view towards Bald Hill Road. This is the equipment storage area. A lot of the equipment was already off the site by the time I had gotten there, because they leave in the mornings and return in the afternoon. And we did receive some public comments on this. Specifically, I want to address a letter that we received from Michelle Mahum, and she had some concerns regarding dust- had some concerns regarding dust and noise. And in relation to that, we wanted to make sure that we had addressed some of those concerns. So I had APCD look at the site and provide us an errata, which is included in, in your, should be included in your files. And I'd like to read that into the record if you don't mind.
All right. Yeah, we received that this morning.
Okay. So I would like to amend Condition of Approval twelve as follows. Prior to operation, the applicant shall obtain an authority to construct ATC permit for the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. Stationary sources or processes, i.e., grinders, chippers, stockpiling of organic materials, gasoline tanks greater than two hundred and fifty gallons, or any equipment or process which has the potential to discharge two pounds per day or more of air pollutants without the benefit of an air pollution control device associated with this project shall comply with the Placer County Air Pollution Control District's Rule 501 and the Air Resources Board, Air Resource Boards statewide portable in equipment registration program at all times. Developers, contractors should contact the APCD prior to construction for additional information, and this is based on APCD Rule 501 in the California Health and Safety Code Section four, two, three, zero, zero, et cetera. And that's from air quality. We'd also like to add the following conditions as well. The applicant shall comply with APCD Rule 228, fugitive dust at all times. To control dust, a water trailer shall be on-site during operational hours. Watering of the site shall be carried out in compliance with all pertinent APCD rules. Additionally, the prime contractor shall be responsible for keeping adjacent public thoroughfares clear of silt, dirt, mud, and debris, and shall wet broom the streets or use another method to control dust as approved by the individual jurisdiction if silt, dirt, mud, or debris is carried over into adjacent public thoroughfares. The contractor shall apply water or use other methods to control dust impacts on and off-site. In addition, dry mechanical sweeping is prohibited. Lastly, the contractor shall suspend all grading operations when fugitive dust exceeds the APCD Rule 228. Limitations: The visible emissions of fugitive dust shall not exceed forty percent opacity nor go beyond the property boundary at any time. Limit or other drying, lime or other drying agents utilized to dry out wet grading areas shall not exceed APCD Rule 228. Limitations.
If I could just add a couple of comments to this, just for members of the public awareness, there is a paper copy of this that is on the table out in front in case you're interested in it. Those last three conditions of approval, I believe the best place to place them with the conditions of approval would be to label them, to number them as seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and then move the existing condition seventeen to make that number twenty. And then slight modification, too, for those three conditions seventeen through nineteen. On condition eighteen and nineteen work list contractor, I would suggest that we include applicant slash contractor in those conditions.
I'm sure when a motion is made, we'll be asking. Thank you.
Thank you. We also received another letter from, from the public, a letter from a neighbor named Stephen Palmer, who had some concerns about the site, specifically its compatibility with the zoning. Those letters should be in your packet if you didn't receive them.
We received those last night and also this morning.
Okay. Lastly, I wanted to ensure that you also received the letters provided from the applicant, Fred Lowe, regarding the businesses that he's worked with, and they did provide him letters regarding the services that he provides.
And we received those this morning.
So overall, the applicant has demonstrated due diligence in working with the county to implement the project with concerns to surrounding neighbors as well as mitigating for the potential impacts of their condition, of their proposed use. And therefore, the staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission take the following actions. Find that the project is categorically exempt from review under SEQA pursuant provisions of Section 15304E of the California Environmental Quality Act, guidelines in Section eighteen point thirty-six point zero six zero F of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, and statutorily exempt pursuant to Section fifteen two six nine of the California Environmental Quality Act, guidelines in Section eighteen point thirty-six point zero one zero of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance under Emergency Projects. Approve the conditional use permit for one year subject to the findings in the staff report and the conditions of approval, and approve the conditional use permit for one subject, or for one year subject to the conditions of approval and supportings, and supported by the findings contained in the staff report, and as amended with recommended errata.
And Adam, that's, we just had one repetitive comment there regarding the approval of the use permit, so.
Oops.
Only one, one recommendation is being asked.
And I'm available if you have any questions regarding the project.
So at this time, does the commission have questions of staff?
I have a couple.
Okay, Ms. Woodward.
Adam, is this expansion into residentially zoned area tied to specific contracts or other things that would benefit the county? So for example, in your staff package, and actually today in your briefing, you discussed the fact that this would benefit the county because it would enhance fire protection, fire mitigation, et cetera, et cetera. So this contractor is expanding into residential area, right? And why now? Is it tied to contracts? Is the company growing? Is there truly going to be benefit to the county? What is, what is the nature of the need for expansion?
Sure. So they have been in operation since two thousand and ten, and I'm not aware of them being in, under any specific contract with the county. I know that they have worked with us before on specific vegetation management along roadways. The benefit that's provided would be overall, not specific. And I'm not sure how else to better answer.
No, that's, that's what I thought you would say. So we have a conditional use permit before us request for a year. After a year, why would you believe that the benefit to the county, which you talked about, would no longer be beneficial?
I believe the benefit would still, the benefit to having tree trimming services in the county would still exist, but that is the limit to the amount of time that we can grant them on the site.
Right. So we would, we would then, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, I think the commission needs to know that this is a request for a temporary use permit. This is not a.
Right.
Land you said is typically allowed in this zone district, so I think, you know, working with someone who is been in operation but not in compliance, this would allow them time to either, and the applicant can speak to this, either find a site that would be in compliance at a different location, or they could come back for an, only one more time, a one-year extension.
Right.
Right? Or they could ask to do something further with this property.
Right.
Through the commission.
So speaking pragmatically now, in my view, anyway, so we do a conditional use permit, we approve it for a year, then we either ask them to locate, relocate, or compress back into where they already are.
They would have to come into compliance, be that through a new application for a rezone, a change to the, the existing land use there, or they would have to vacate the site, or if they did decide to compress down into the, the area that is zoned commercial, they would still have to come in for a, a permanent minor use permit.
Okay. I, I consider all of those to be unlikely personally. Now, others may differ, that's fine, but I, I find the more likely approach here to be in a second request for a conditional use permit. And then potentially followed by a request for rezoning. That's what I would do, anyway. So I guess I find this hard to imagine that we're gonna do this for one year. Now, EJ made a point here that this would then allow the, the individual to locate a new place to do this work.
Mm-hmm.
And so in theory, you could say to the property owners in the area whose rights, I believe, and this is contrary, by the way, to the staff report to some degree, but I believe they are being infringed upon, and I frankly think if we do this, we're infringing, you know, we are infringing upon their property rights. So there has to be a good reason for that, and since there are no contracts tied to this, there is no expansion of benefit to the community or to the county. And after one year of this, we're going to ask them to either compress or relocate. I, I just wonder why in the world we would do this now, frankly. Yeah, I, I would love to hear the, the views of others.
Sure. I will let you speak, but I, just granting it now does, as EJ had described, bring them into compliance, at least under the current code. It does limit them on what they can do per the conditions of approval. The applicant has been looking for other locations. We did look at a location up in Applegate that wasn't gonna fit for their, for their requirements. So it's not a foregone conclusion that they're planning on staying on the site, but they are, they would like to at least be in compliance while they're operating for the next year and while they're searching out their options.
But why is it the responsibility of a property owner in the area to, rather than, why is it not the responsibility of the county to enforce, enforce right now, rather than it being the responsibility of a community member to allow this to continue because the county can't or will not enforce it? Why are the rights of the property owners who are nearby subordinate to this request to move into a place which is not currently zoned for this? That's the, that's the thing I'm struggling with. And, and by the way, for public awareness, we did have a correspondence about this.
So, so I might jump in, you know, so, you know, our zoning code does allow for temporary conditional use permits. And, you know, we, you know, we have probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred code compliance cases in the county. And, you know, we do everything we can to resolve those. A lot of those are, are there any, is there any allowances in our zoning code to correct some of these violations? And if there's ever an option to do that, we go down that path. In this particular zone, it would take a, you know, a rezoning, possible general plan amendment to allow them to encroach in the area they, they want to. There is other C-two zoning at the same intersection.
Yeah.
Even across the street where this, they could apply for a permit to go in that area as well. But, you know, our zoning code does allow different provisions, you know, where certain uses could be allowed subject to, you know, the purview of the Planning Commission. And so I think that's why we're here. We're trying to, you know, resolve this violation. That's our goal, is to resolve it. What a temporary conditional use permit does is allow time to do that.
And I, and I absolutely would support that, except that we have community members now on record.
Absolutely.
Who I believe have done a great job of providing a compelling counterargument.
Right. And, and, and we do have that correspondence, and I, I think staff's response to that is, you know, can we sufficiently condition this conditional use permit to address the concerns of the neighbors? And, you know, I think staff's, staff's position is that we do have conditions in place that would mitigate those concerns over the next year. Now, ultimately, it's up to your commission to, to decide whether or not, you know, that's sufficient or not. So I think that's what's before you today.
Okay. I, I personally think that the county owes the community residents that are there enforcement, personally, at least at this point, but I am definitely willing to listen to everybody else, too.
I, I think one of the questions, EJ, that wasn't answered is, you know, the, the neighbors are having to file the complaint, so does the county actually have enforcement officers driving around looking for every violation in the county? But how does the county deal with that? Because I, I believe, my understanding is pretty much, if you see it, you take care of it, otherwise you are relying on the community.
Absolutely.
To inform you.
Absolutely.
When there's a problem.
Yep.
Yeah. Ms. Nathan?
A couple of clarification. After one year, does it need to come back here for the extension approval? And then if we don't allow the CUP, how long will they have to come into compliance?
Once, and, you know, a person in violation, you know, is sent to planning to go through a process to see if they can correct the violation, even if it's temporarily, code compliance, you know, waits for the decision on that before they pursue rectifying the situation.
So it's undetermined?
Correct.
Are there questions of the staff from commission? I don't see any.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, sorry, it just came to my mind. Clarify, the chipping material is on the commercial site and has now been pushed on to the agricultural site?
The chipping material, the storage area was, has always been on the residential agricultural portion of the site.
Okay. And is their equipment is located on the commercial site?
Their equipment is, for the site plan, is kind of in between the both, both of those designations. Where that specific zoning line exists, since it does not follow a property line, is difficult to locate.
So can chipping material be classified as agricultural materials if they're putting it back into soil conditions and used in gardening or any type of agricultural use?
Timber products are described as, as potential agricultural, in, in the description for right to farm in the county ordinance. It does include wood products, provided they're not final wood products, so not lumber.
Right.
So it does include that as a potential agricultural product. But that section is specifically about harvesting and processing of agricultural products, so it's a little vague as to whether or not wood chips would count.
But if they're being incorporated back into the soils for agricultural use, though they're not harvested agricultural materials such as fruits and vegetables, they're still participating in the agricultural industry.
True, just off-site, because those chips would be spread somewhere else off-site.
Right. But it's just like if somebody sold their product somewhere else, it's off-site. So if they're selling their product to somebody else off-site, would that not fall into that category as agricultural product?
Potentially, but I don't know if I can make that call. That might be up for the agriculture, Agriculture Commission to make that determination.
Okay. And just to add to that, Commissioner Demetey, the residential agricultural zoning, I mean, there are uses allowed under that zone classification that are very similar to this commercial operation, you know, like forestry, agricultural processing, things like that. So there are elements of what they do that, you know, potentially could fall under the residential ag, but it is a, a, you know, commercial, you know, treat trimming business operation that also has an associated storage lot uses that are not allowed in that RA zoning. But there, there is some gray area, there is some fine line, but there are some similarities as well between the uses.
All right. Other questions of the commission? If not, is the applicant here and would they like to speak? Come forward.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Fred Lowe, and, and I, along with two of my sons, own and operate TreePro Tree Service. We've, like Adam mentioned, we, we've been in the OFER area for the last ten years, and I, it never occurred to me that there was any kind of a problem with land use to where we were, or we would have addressed it sooner. As soon as we found out there was a violation, the first thing I did was ask for a meeting with Planning, Zoning, I think, two other divisions, and, and, you know, try to clarify the problem here and find out what's wrong. And I would like to speak before I forget to Mr. Woodward's question about, you know, it really spoke to, you know, what interest is it in the county and perhaps even the public good that we remain there? We do have current contracts with Placer County, and that contract is utilized by roads, public works, and parks. We worked for Parks yesterday. utilized by roads, public works, and parks. We worked for parks yesterday. We provide a safer environment from tree risks throughout the community. We were selected, actually, I guess it's been three years ago now, to be one of the contractors to participate in the tree mortality project as a result of the drought for the last seven years. As you know, hundreds of thousands of trees have died. And this tree mortality project was funded to help remove the risks along county roadways and county infrastructure. We participated in a process they called to select most qualified contractors. It was a statewide process. I think it went out to 150 pre-service contractors. We were selected number two of that whole group among some very large companies. We consider ourselves to be a very responsible and compliant company. We want to comply. We wanted to do the right thing here. And in terms of current contracts, yes, we have a current contract with Placer County that's utilized by those departments that I mentioned. We have a current contract with the US Bureau of Reclamation that takes care of the area down around Folsom Lake. Pardon me. We have a current CMAS contract that we utilize with the city of Rockland. We have a current contract in force with Placer County Water Agency. They've had a lot of problems, you know, certainly with the fire and everything, you know. And so we work for those, we work, and this is frequent, we work for these people I just mentioned all the time. We also have a CAL FIRE hired equipment contract. We've been on all the major incidents that you guys have heard about the last few years. Paradise, Santa Rosa, Ventura, Santa Barbara, the Lord's Butte Fire down in San Andreas. We were there for seven months post-fire to do cleanup so that it could restore, PG&E could restore energy to the areas. What happens in a fire is all the trees burn, and then they want to fall back in, back into the right of way for the power lines. So somebody has to go in and remove those dead standing trees that are in danger of toppling. And ironically, I guess, if you will, we had a, a project scheduled for the week that, that creek fire took off and burned up through Colfax week before last. We were scheduled, scheduled, I have it in my schedule, to work on the other side of the, of Colfax High School on that hill. We're actually going to do that job on Monday. We couldn't do it that week because it was burning up there on the other side of the school. Also Monday, I'm meeting with the maintenance people with Colfax High School, and we're going to be discussing removing the burned trees along the other side that just burned. We did a fuel load reduction project within the last few months down at the Bear River Campground. And I just found out from a county employee, I don't know the particulars of it, but our area did not burn. And that's the kind of work we do. We do, half of the work we do is defensible space work. We also, you know, take trees off of homes during storms and stuff, you know, that's the kind of stuff we do. So I don't know how much you'd like to know about that. I don't want to really give you a resume, but I guess I did.
Are there questions of the commission from Mr. Wong?
I have a question. What's the turnover time from you bringing in chips to your place to send them off to the cogeneration plant or to wherever else you're dispersing them to?
Our turnover time, as we rotate them out pretty quickly, we got a bunch out this week. And guess where they went? To a Mandarin farmer. You asked that question. Rich Ferreira took probably a couple hundred yards of chips this week.
Right. I know a lot of growers who use.
And they use them. And they, and you know what they do? They really help with the drought, too. They, they retain the moisture in the soil, and they also feed the trees. And, and it really is used, the stuff that doesn't go to the biomass to create green energy does pretty much wind up with farmers and homeowners.
So chips don't stay on your property more than, how long would you say on average?
I'm fine with the condition of rotating them out like Adam had suggested every 30 days. You know, don't let anything set and become odorous, and don't like, let anything set and become potential spontaneous combustion, fire hazard. And I would like to say that I completely accept the conditions laid out by staff. I think they make sense. If I were to live there, I would want these conditions. I want to be a good neighbor. That's always been the case here. We have never been approached directly, and when we have, we try to respond. If we had, we try to respond. I feel a little bit that we were there over two years before the person that complained did complain. And it wasn't until the person that complained had a disagreement with the property owner that we got brought into that. And I really feel that's what happened here. And so we're going to do everything we can to continue to be good neighbors. And that's why we're here.
You're leasing the property, correct? You're, you're not the property owner?
No, Mike Gottman is the property owner here. We rented from him for the last, what, 11 years, Mike, and.
Okay. Mr. Wong, like, first of all, I want, I want you to know, I absolutely respect what you do. You know, you are a small business owner, and that's fabulous. And absolutely believe that, you know, what you're doing currently is important. And you made, I thought you made a great argument about some of the things that you're doing being very relevant to fire defense and that sort of thing. What concerns me is that we allow, we, we solve a problem of non-compliance by giving you permission to not comply. And what I don't know is, what is the end game here? If the end game is that 365 days from now, you will stand here again and ask for another year, I have a problem with that, to be honest. What I, what I really want to know is, what are you, what is, what are you going to do to resolve the compliance issues going forward? Because right now, you're operating in an area that is not zoned correctly for what your use is. If that did not have an impact on the community, the people who are your neighbors, I personally wouldn't have a problem with that either. But it clearly does. And so that's why I really need to understand what is going to happen over the next year to resolve this issue.
Well, what we will do, and what we have done, is, as we have gone over and above the conditions, we got ahead of the conditions that were outlined by taking steps immediately. When I first heard about this violation, now it's, gosh, it's been almost six months. You know, one of the noisy, the noisier things that we do, we're chipping logs on site, where on site, we would chip these logs into our chip pile. We quit doing that immediately. We started hauling those logs whole. We no longer chip on the site routinely. The only time you hear a chipper running on site is when we're working on the chipper to demonstrate, see if it works properly. And that creates probably the most dust. We immediately started doing that. We constructed this fence. Mike and I spent $6,000 on this fence. Within two weeks of, of me trying to engage the neighbor and ask him, you know, is there anything we can do, you know, to make this better? He said he didn't like looking at our stuff. So within two weeks, we had a fence up. We quit chipping logs on site. Again, we started hauling them away. We don't start the work trucks until 7:00 AM and, and try not to have any noise there. We.
If I, if I could just ask, though, for clarity, I understand all that. What happens in the next 365 days to prevent you from having to come back and ask for another conditional use permit?
What will happen is we're going to be exploring every option possible. I'm a forward-thinking person. I'm not going to just sit around for 364 days and then show up here. I'm going to try to get ahead of this. I, it's, it's not just important to me, but it's important to the people that work for me, that we continue and that we have a place to be. It's a very difficult market right now for commercial properties that do the, any kind of, the kind of stuff that we do. And we have explored it, and we will continue to explore all of our options. And I guess that's all I can tell you. I don't know what's out there. And, but we are watching, and we watch all the time. And I think we, I think we do need to explore a way to accommodate where we are. Mike's been generous enough to say, heck, I don't care if you move all your stuff right up front there where my stuff is. And, and, you know, I don't really want to do that. And I, what I can tell you is that I'll explore each and every option. And the, and the reason I'll do that is not just because of me, it's because of the people that work for me. You should know that we're also a very responsible employer, you know. The people that work for me, they get paid prevailing wage every single day, every hour of the day. They, they're provided health insurance, you know. We're, we're the kind of employer you want in a community. They have retirement. And so, yeah, we take it seriously. And yes, sir, we will, we will find a way to continue and do it in a way that we comply.
Right. I believe you'll comply. I'm just concerned about next year.
I'm concerned, too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other commissioner of question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, isn't it?
We have a question of you.
Let me see. I saw your list of equipment, but you talk about logs? Do you have a logging truck business, too, or?
No, sir. No, it's all chipping. We have chippers that will chip pretty good sized stuff. And I'm glad you brought that up, actually. We have chippers that are on rubber tracks that operate remotely. And that's what we do a lot when we do like defensible space clearing around communities, like we've done for the Auburn Fire Department around the edges of town. And, and so these are big chippers. They'll chip big logs. And that's what I was talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, it would like to open it up for public comment. Again, those online, raise your hand. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak, come forward. Either one of you.
Good morning, planning commissioners. Can I ask before I start if you have received the package that I sent with the photos?
Yes, we have.
Okay, fabulous.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Michelle Mason, and I live at 1109 Lozana's Road in Newcastle. 11 years ago, two local businessmen from American Well Drilling and Tree Pro agreed to an arrangement to allow Tree Pro, at the time a small business with just four or five pieces of equipment, to operate on an empty lot of residential land surrounded by original homeowners at the time, both of whom were elderly and old friends from the community. For eight years, Tree Pro has operated under the radar with, it appears now, no business license, no regulators to answer to, and the ability to operate a business out of sight and out of mind of the Placer County. And those businesses have done nothing in the past to make this area compliant before our complaint was made. In 2016 and 2018, the two properties directly opposite, less than 100 feet of the lot where Tree Pro has been conducting their business changed hands. One was purchased by a serving member of the National Guards and his young family, and the other was by two frontline healthcare workers, myself and my husband. Both families were aware and accepting of the small business across the road. But as a result of the tragic campfires in Paradise in 2018, it was a major, a major priority set by the government to reduce the future risks of fires. And by issuing these presumably lucrative contracts to Tree Services and many other ground clearing companies, the business grew. It appears that sometime in 2019 or early 2020, Tree Pro secured these contracts, some of which were with Placer County, as stated, even though it appears Tree Pro has no business license, as is the condition of the CUP.
You have one minute to go.
Thank you. And they were operating on what is not zoned land. Tree Pro rapidly grew by the amount, by at least threefold in the amount of equipment and manpower. By September 2020, the amount of dust, noise, and has increased to an unhealthy level, and sometimes starting at 6:00 AM. The photographic video that I have sent you clearly shows that the, the Tree Pro cannot meet the conditions of requirement that would require that they not be detrimental to the health, safety, and comfort and general welfare of the neighboring company. We wonder, sorry, Tree Pro has continued to state that they have only parking vehicles, removing tree trimming vehicles. Just the fact that the extent of their operational needs is much more than that. While the work that Tree Pro does is undeniably beneficial to the community, they are 100% mobile and with zero permanent structures, we feel that they could be, that they could move.
That's your three-minute time. So if you could wrap it up.
Thank you. We feel that they could move and not continue to damage the land and the peace and comfort that we have in our neighborhood. We believe that Tree Pro has not and cannot meet the requirements of the COP. And we ask that you grant this conditional use permit for only three months, giving Tree Pro the necessary time they have to move to another location. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You had your hand up to speak?
Yes.
If you'd come forward.
Hello, gentlemen, planning commission. My name is Catherine Brown. I am a longtime resident of Ofer, Ofer Valley. In fact, I grew up there. I'm really horrible at public speaking, so please forgive me. I'm really nervous right now. But I did want to convey a couple of points that I think are really important. I, I know Fred, and I know Mike. They have both, I've used both at our services. I think they're fine people. And I think they do a great job at what they do. My concern, most importantly, other than the aesthetic, you know, lack of beauty that it brings to a very important corner of Ofer's history, is, and the noise, and, and even though the rotation of the wood is supposed to happen occasionally, you could drive by there during the cooler months, and you will see the, the gases go up. I mean, it looks like it's on fire. I know it's probably not, but it is releasing other gases through there. My primary concern about this is completely health and safety, period. I surrendered to the idea that it was kind of ugly years ago. That's just what happens. But it is a health and safety concern because that location now, it's actually just become a dispatch unit for all their utility vehicles. I mean, the vehicles are larger than the PG&E utility trucks that you see go out and about. They could be at least 40 feet long, trailers, large vehicles. Our country roads are incredibly narrow, incredibly narrow. And actually, if we can even bring up a photo of the location up there, I just want to point out a couple of things as well. In addition to that, the location of this, thank you so much, I appreciate it, the location of this is only 300 feet away from Ofer Elementary School. Ofer Elementary School is on, oh, thank you. Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, so Ofer Elementary School is actually right up this road. You can actually see part of it right here. So even this morning, we had parents just lined up along the schools. There's a very small parking lot. Parents drive, drop off their kids, drive on the side of the road, walk in to take their kids in and out throughout the day. That occurs often throughout the school year. But in addition to that, we also have the location right here is a 90-degree turn, and a location here is a 90-degree turn. The trucks that are coming and going are wider than needed, or wider than should be on those type of roads. They drive incredibly fast in and out of the community. And they're coming and going throughout the day. I personally have almost been run off the road by some of the trucks. I drive on those roads all the time. I see other vehicles encountering the same thing, and pedestrians as well, and cyclists, because we have tons of cyclists that are out in that area. So I look at this as a health and safety concern. And I really think that there's an opportunity here for us. I, I surrender to the idea that that land could be commercial use, but I think this is the wrong use for that land. The, the business itself is hindering the safety and putting at risk the people of our community. And for that reason, I think we should go ahead and ask for a very temporary, I agree with the neighbor there, whom I have yet to meet, with three months. All of the vehicles are movable.
If you could wrap it up.
Immediately. Yes. My apologies. But it could easily be moved. Everything could be moved within three months, very easily. So thank you for your consideration. And again, I stand up frightened to talk, but just to speak for the health and safety of my community. So thank you.
Thank you. And you did well. Are there anyone else in the public or in, in this building? And anyone on the Zoom call, Zoom? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Act, no.
Hello.
Not now. No. You, as, well, as a public comment, you can come on up. So we're still taking public comment. So yes.
You can go ahead and go.
Yeah. So anyone online? Go ahead.
Mr. Palmer, if you'll unmute your mic, you'll have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Planning commission, I just wanted to point out, I did just forward you an email that I found, was we're talking here today. I listened, and I was going through emails from five years ago. five years ago. So I kept hearing that the first violation notice, first complaint, just came back in January. I actually submitted a complaint back in May of 2016, and at that point in time, the applicant was expanding to the north into the residential area, and they took down a fence and started grading and clearing, and I sent an email to Leo Rososco, and she forwarded on to Ted Rel from Code Compliance Services, and I got a response from them saying, I noticed they did do a little grading to a little of the property, but much less would require a permit. And there's some discussion internally between them about whether or not it was commercial or residential. Basically, the end of the line was, for now, we are taking no action. So I just wanted to provide that for additional information, that even though maybe just went to compliance recently, we did notice when this happened back in 2016, and the county was made aware at that time, and made a decision not to pursue any compliance issues. Thank you.
Thank you. There's Sue, okay. So at this time, are there any other comments from the public or the applicant? So it'd be your time to talk now, yes? I'm going to leave the public comment open, because we have another individual who's going to speak.
I just wanted to clarify something, I just didn't want to be mischaracterized here. One thing that was mentioned was a business license. We've always had a business license, that's easy to check, give them a call, you know, with the county here. And that's, that's just not true. Also, we did not have a contract for Paradise, but let me tell you what we did for Paradise. We called and offered our equipment and personnel to go up there, and we helped the family clear their property, a family that didn't have insurance, and we footed the bill for it, and we volunteered to do that, that's what we did. And and that's what we did in Paradise. Also, in terms of the Ofer Elementary School, we donate our bucket truck and labor every year to decorate their Christmas tree. You know, we do consider ourselves part of the community here, and and the lady that mentioned the people being run off of the road by trucks, certainly not my trucks, I just want to make that clear.
Right.
Anyway, I just, it's troubling to me to hear these kind of comments when I'm so accessible, you just drive in there and talk to me if you have a problem, you know, but anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And sir, you wanted to make a comment? Yes, please.
So I am, I am Mike Ottman, my wife and I own this property, we've owned it for 31 A lot of this property up here, I'd have to show you, but it is zone commercial, so if you look, just these stairs are commercial, you know, has it, got a red dot here, here, yellow, that's sunset, tree, so, part of that.
Yeah. Could you go back to the microphone, so we have it on record?
So anyway, so the gentleman that comes up off the sunset has been there for at least 30 years, and he's got big 40-foot trailers with big Peterbilt to go in and out of there daily. If you're looking, you see the, the green there.
Was that?
Oh, okay.
Little red dot.
Well, you can see where all the green is outlined there, that's, that's all the commercial property. So my property is where it says C2B, whatever, there, three corner there, you can see where that line runs across. So I had to get that all rezoned, or re, not rezoned, but had to do a lot line adjustment because I have two buildings, my well, my septic, and my buildings had to be on one parcel. Before I did that lot line adjustment, I had four separate parcels, because back in the 1850s, 1860s, 1870s, you had a little parcel that was 20 by 120, 75 by 120, a little corner piece going around. So there was actually four little parcels, if you look at how all the parcels are, they're very, very small. So when the zoning was brought up, it's, I don't know who said, you Adam said the zoning was 2.3 acres?
For the residential, rural residential.
Okay, so if you, if you look at all those parcels there, going up Bald Hill, where the blue is there, there's two houses, now both those parcels are not 2.3 acres. The parcel across the street from me is not 2.3 acres. The property where you live is one acre, the property your neighbor is one acre. So those properties are really, really small properties, so I kind of have, it's kind of weird how, you look at my parcel there, that 2.1, 2.1 acre piece, how half of it is zone commercial, so what am I going to do with that piece in the back? What is my intention? I can't build a house on it. So how do I get it to that whole piece is usable? Okay? I mean, does that make sense? So put yourself in my position, I got a piece of property that I can't even build a house on that piece, but all my neighbors have existing houses because they were built in the 40s, 50s, 60s.
All right, so, so we're taking your comments at this, we're listening.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Oh, no more, no more comments. So at this time, the public comment period is closed, let's bring it back. Is there any response from the staff, Adam, anything that you want to respond to? I didn't hear anything, but just in case.
No.
No, all right, all right, so at this time, commission discussion?
See, before you give the applicant.
Yes, I did.
Already.
Yeah, we're done.
You give them enough.
The who?
The applicant.
Yes, they did, they did, they just talked. It's, they talked, they had their opportunity. Any other, just any discussion by the commission? I guess I have a question, is there, this is obviously still new to me, so a three month or a, a three-month CUP is an authorized approach that we could, we could set in place?
Yes, the, the code section authorizes up to a year, so you can choose any amount below that.
So, you know, we, I think we had a good discussion with, obviously, a person who owns a small business, is a, is a hardworking individual and wants to do the right thing for the community, I get that, I do. But also who seemed to be committed to trying to find a way to resolve this over the long, or for the long term, before the end of 365 days. We're right in the middle of the fire season, interfering with his ability to do the things that he does right now doesn't make a lot of sense to me. On the other hand, six months from now, the fire season will start to hopefully be mitigated to some degree, so perhaps a CUP that's at six months would allow us to, would allow him time to work through the process of locating an alternative here, perhaps. It would also give us a little bit of a tighter rein on this, so that if he needs to come back and request another extension, we could consider it at that time. So I just throw that out as a possible thought for everybody to consider. Any other discussion? You entertain a motion then?
So Adam, could you go to the recommendations slide?
Yeah.
And then I, if, if the commission is going to look at the six month, we would modify condition number, the new condition number 20, with a February.
Expiration date of February 12th, 2022.
February 12th, 2022?
Correct.
All right, well, then I will make a motion.
One question?
Sure.
Would he still be able to apply for an extension? Even though he's been doing it 12 months, can he still do it at six months?
Yes, so, under the code, he's allowed to apply for an extension up to a year, it would have to come back before this planning commission, though.
So, so we just accelerate this conversation if we have to have it again? Yeah. So, okay, well, I will move then. We find that the project is categorically exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to provisions of Section 15304E of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.060F of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class 4, Minor Alterations to Land, and statutorily exempt pursuant to Section 15269 of the SEQA Guidelines and Section 1836010 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Emergency Projects, approve the condition.
That would be where you would stop.
Pardon me?
So, the wording that's up there, that last sentence about approving the conditional use permit should actually be taken as a separate item.
No, okay.
It's actually the second one, I think it's just a.
Okay. Okay, so that's it for the motion?
That is it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. DiMattei.
Yes.
And a vote from, let's see, Mr. Cannon was not present, so Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon wasn't there?
No.
Okay, oh, okay. So your second motion then regarding approval of the conditional use permit? I recommend that we approve the conditional use permit until 12th February 2022, subject to the findings in the staff report and conditions of approval. Okay, we have a second.
I would just, I believe staff had an errata as well that modified a couple of conditions of approval. If, if you're interested, I think that would be staff's recommendation that the motion be subject to that errata and as modified by councilor.
I believe we, yeah, we had two errata? Or just one? Okay, just, yeah, errata.
Just one.
Okay, so restated then, I move that we approve the conditional use permit for, or up until 12th February 2022, subject to the findings in the staff report and conditions of approval and errata, as discussed.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
First from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so vote for Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
There are appeal rights for this one.
What's that?
There are appeal rights for this one.
Oh, appeal, yes, okay, I was just looking, I see, we had that motion twice, I'm sorry, I just realized that again. So, "The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who attended today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619." Thank you. We are moving on to our third item, informational update on the Rural Main Streets Technical Assistance Program and Meadow Vista Demonstration Project. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you are calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Nikki Strigan, senior planner, will be presenting the item.
Good morning, coming on afternoon, Commissioner Haugie, fellow commissioners. My name is Nikki Strigan with your Planning Services Division, I'm a senior planner with the division. I'm joined today by Katie Jackson with our Department of Public Works, who's been working on this project with me, along with someone who's not here, one of our Civic Spark fellows, actually, Rebecca Lays, who you may have met at some time during 2020. But we have been working on a project with the community of Meadow Vista, we're going to sort of showcase this for you today, a demonstration project that looked at low-cost temporary improvements that could be installed more permanently into the future, both to enhance local, they're done to enhance local neighborhoods and gathering places and that kind of thing. So I'm going to walk you through some of the background on this project and show you some images from an event that was put on, on June 26th, a couple months ago, or a month or so ago. Let's see, for the Meadow Vista residents listening at home, I do want to mention, we're going to do a full recap with your municipal advisory council, with survey results and some next steps, so more to come with, with your community. Little bit of background here, as far as the catalyst for this project, Meadow Vista has a subcommittee for safety and beautification that was developed or founded in 2015. In 2017, community members actually reached out to the Department of Public Works about public safety issues, namely biking and walking along their main town center area along Placer Hills Road. The Department of Public Works held some workshops to talk about some possible solutions and some design ideas. Katie and I actually brought forward a community plan amendment in 2018 that your commission did hear, that looked at retaining the current right-of-way in Meadow Vista's town center rather than widening it. The, the community plan calls for a two-way left-hand turn lane down the center, and the community just thought that that was too large, so being able to retain that, given the current traffic flow and that kind of thing, was the amendment that we brought forward. At the time, the then District 5 supervisor asked us to participate in the Civic Lab program, and Katie and I did do that, along with some members from the community, which, you know, came, from that came a number of ideas. Some have been implemented, which included restriping some of the lanes to be a little bit narrow, I think they're 11-foot widths as opposed to 12, since restriping was done about a year or so ago. There are some sheros, which are, which are arrows that are designed to signify to motorists to share the road with bicyclists. And then, of course, we took, took part in the Rural Main Streets program, which was a grant funded through Caltrans, through the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, a $20,000 award, the results of which we'll walk you through today. So that's just a, a little bit of background on, on where we've come from. We did hold a virtual workshop with the community in 2020, and largely, a lot of the things that we had been talking about with the community were echoed in that workshop, which were to enhance the pedestrian infrastructure in, in the town center, to promote traffic calming, to support the local businesses, and reduce some of the vacancies that are in the area, but also to retain the rural character, so not turning the, the main, main road that goes through Meadow Vista into, you know, an extremely urban kind of place to recognize that rural, rural character. So if you are not familiar with the community of Meadow Vista, here's a map that shows our study area, so I-80 is, is just to the south of us, Placer Hills Road runs north to south. Where are you going to work for me? But Placer Hills Road runs north to the south, where you see all the commercial zoning. Our study area was from Meadow Vista Road, on the south part of the map, to Conby Road up on the north side. You can see the mix of zoning in this area, there's a mix of open space, commercially-zoned property and residentially-zoned property, most of the residential kind of on the outskirts of the corridor. And there are uses throughout the parcel that include thrift stores, a few thrift stores at the north end, a post office, there's educational uses, sports fields, restaurants, a hardware store, auto uses, and that type of thing. Some of the existing conditions in this area, you can see on the right-hand side is an example of sort of a informal path that some of the residents use, but there are disjointed pedestrian pathways, that ingress and egress to businesses aren't, aren't delineated very, very clearly. There are some vacant buildings, there are some challenges with regard to infrastructure tied to soil and perking in that area. There's a great sense of community and a lot of local events that happen, including movie nights, and the sports fields are, are used by teams and the like. And then there's also a desire to, but, and also some kind of cohesion with existing connections between the school, park, the ARD runs a pool in the area, and some community spaces. So the purpose of the Rural Main Street program, I mentioned, it was a $20,000 award through SECOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. It enabled us to work with a couple of consultants, Michelle Reeves from Civilist Consulting, and the Local Government Commission. And the purpose of it was to advance a vision for the corridor, to make the area livable, walkable, safe, and economically viable, and then ultimately to do a demonstration project, which we were, we were able to do in, in 2021, despite, you know, projecting to do it in 2020, the pandemic didn't, didn't slow us down, we were able to accomplish that in 2021. So the Local Government Commission helped us develop a tool So the Local Government Commission helped us develop a toolkit that the community could follow as far as pulling off this demonstration event, and the concept that we executed was here on your screen. So I'll orient you here a little bit. To the upper left is a new cafe in Meadow Vista called The Local Cafe, and then to the right are some small businesses. There's a real estate firm there. And then at Meadow, south of Meadow Lane and Placer Hills Road is where some ballfields start. So our demonstration event took place right at this intersection between Meadow Lane and Placer Hills Road, and what we did was we delineated some of the curb sections better, so that's where you see some of the white at the corners. We put together some, and when I say we, I mean the community did all of this, this was very much so community-led, they put together some high-visibility crosswalks that were painted on tar paper and then temporarily taped onto the road. The curbs that I mentioned were delineated with straw wattles and some landscaping that had been, that was borrowed from Isley's, Green Acres Isley's locally. And then the red line delineates a pedestrian walkway that was temporarily put together with some burgundy-colored tape and some chalk markings. And again, all of this was sort of decorated, as you'll see, with some temporary landscaping and that kind of thing. So here are some pictures from the day. So this is looking south on Placer Hills Road. You can see the, one high-visibility crosswalk, it looks like a piano key, in fact, they call it a piano key crosswalk on that far side. And then there's another one that sweeps north to south, that was a creative crosswalk. It's got stamps from, the stamping on it includes oak leaves and acorns and those kinds of things. Again, the community came up with this all on their own and stenciled those onto tar paper, and these were laid across, laid across the roads to temporarily show what higher visibility crosswalks might look like. You can see the straw wattles in this picture, that again, they delineate better where the road is as compared to where a curb would, could go. And then, of course, the decorations, some of them are just planters, some of theirs are put into borrowed tires that have some wrapping paper around them. That's the kind of decorating that was, that was done. This next picture shows kind of a closer image of that piano key crosswalk right across Placer Hills Road. And we did get, we got a lot of comments on how, how like very visible that was. Here it is from another angle. And you can see our survey booth and booth where community members could come over on the upper, upper left there. And here is a look at our, the creative crosswalk, and then if you recognize Dean Prigmore, he's standing there in the middle of the road. And then again, a closer look at how you can see the delineation between the roadway and the curb extension with those wattles landscaping. This image shows the fire district who came to our event to kind of test out the turning radius and the geometry of the road, so we had, we took some pictures of them making some of the turns here, practicing some turning movements. And then here's an image of that temporary pedestrian path, which could, you know, could, that could be where like a sidewalk could go, but this was done with, I mentioned, that burgundy tape and was decorated with chalk. And then finally, this is looking over at that corner at the ballfields, those, that corner is also, you know, delineated as far as curb definition with the straw wattles. So I mentioned a number of people had attended our event, I think we had well over 50 people in attendance. Commissioner Haugie was at the event, Supervisor Gustafson volunteered at our event for a couple of hours. We had over 50 people in attendance, we have 58 survey responses. So we're working on tallying and analyzing that information, but some of the preliminary feedback you can see up on the screen, retaining the rural character of the area was one of those key pieces we heard. There was a strong preference for the piano key style, high-visibility crosswalk. They really liked curb extension and delineation and that, that, they felt that that really slowed traffic down, which was the intent, right? As part of putting the straw wattles and that kind of thing in. A lot of people loved the landscaping, but asked a lot of questions, how is this going to be maintained? And those kinds of things, and that's a hard thing, I think, for the county to maintain. That would be something you see a business improvement district, or a chamber, or a coalition of community members working on, but they really loved it, and it did, it did look great. And then we did a little bit of, a little bit of surveying related to what a sidewalk could be, like sidewalk connections could make throughout Placer Hills Road, and talked about sidewalk materials. One of their preferences was not to be, you know, not to have concrete sidewalks, but to have decomposed granite, similar to what's in the Granite Bay area, again, just to keep that rural feel. So that's, that's some preliminary feedback, and we will be working with the district directors for District 5 to present this information to the MAC in October. That concludes my presentation. I mean, I do want to say a thank you to the community members who planned and volunteered and got donations and all of those things, and a big thank you to Rebecca Lays, she's not here, but she did a lot of work to project manage this demo event, our Civic Spark Fellow. Happy to take questions if you have them, thank you.
Any questions of the commission? Yes, Nathan?
Thank you, Nikki. I remember a couple years ago, we had a presentation about improving bike trails. There's a whole trail system, Meadow Vista was part of that community. I just wonder if you looked at that to see how these, I'm just looking at the curbs so close to the road? I wonder how those future trails might be impacted by those curves so close? Because you're going to, I know you have your sheroes, which, I love that word, but you're going to force the bikers and the cars closer together with that. So if you haven't, it might make some sense to look at that trail system.
Pretty sure that was part of the Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Yeah, yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure of the status of the Parks and Trails Master Plan, but I know this is really, advocates in this area for trails are very, very strong. It came, I think it came up in our, some of our survey information, just to make sure that those connections are used most efficiently. But yes, you're right, the, this, you know, the sheroes and the way that this demonstrate, demonstration event shows, bikers are sharing the road with motorists.
Great. Other questions?
I have a question. Thank you, that was great. Is Placer Hills Road becoming more congested? Is that why, I mean, I think crosswalks should be there anyways, but is there a need to have a stop sign there as well? I just noticed on your pictures, it's only a two-way stop instead of a four-way stop, or three-way, however that road goes. Do you have a stop on Meadow Vista or Meadow Lane?
It is, it is, there's a one stop on Meadow Lane. But otherwise, there's no, there's not a stop at this intersection on Placer Hills Road. There's a pedestrian crossing at one more intersection, and then the stop at the start of our study area, Meadow Vista Road, I believe it's called, is only a stop turning onto Placer Hills Road. There are no, other than the pedestrian crossing, there isn't a stop along Placer Hills Road. Is it becoming more congested? I, I mean, I'm turning to Katie. I mean, there's not a lot of development happening in the community, but there are concerns for truck trips, there's concerns during, when school pickup and drop-off happens, about slowing that occurs, or rather, I should say, speeding that occurs, you know, the concept of slowing traffic down on Placer Hills Road was what we heard very clearly from community members.
So would it be advantageous to put this in as well with a stop sign to slow traffic?
Stop signs have come up, but if it's warranted, I'll turn to the traffic engineer to answer that.
Good morning, Katie Jackson with the Department of Public Works. So stop signs are a traffic control device that we use when the side streets or the main street have enough traffic and they need to be controlled. So in a case like this, we have a stop sign on Meadow Lane, no stop sign on Placer Hills Road. We would consider a stop sign on Placer Hills Road if there's enough traffic to warrant it, meaning the vehicles on Meadow Lane are unable to find enough gaps in traffic to safely pull out onto Placer Hills Road. So I don't think that it's close to meeting those technical warrants quite yet. I don't know that there is, I mean, most areas of the county are increasing in their traffic levels over time, and I think Meadow Vista is no exception. But the concerns around traffic really stem from Placer Hills Road being a rural arterial, it's classified as a rural arterial, in our general plan and in the Meadow Vista Community Plan. And it's, the speed limit out there is 40 miles an hour outside of the town, and when you get into this town area, it goes down to 25 miles per hour. And so that transition is difficult to achieve for drivers, and so the desire of the community is to have people slow down as they go through town, and obviously, our desire too, because we have lowered the speed limits through town. And so this treatment that you see here is really intended to slow speeds without stopping traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions? One of the things, just to kind of, I was on that committee in 2015, and all this began as, I think, Nikki, you told us there is about a million dollars to help Meadow Vista, and that we took a look at what it would cost to make the improvements, which was close to 17 million. So this becomes a way to get traffic calming, and one of the huge issues is there's a lot of kids who walk down Placer Hills Road and there's no sidewalk. And there hasn't, there's some crosswalks, but not properly placed, so it really was to get the safety of that area improved with the funding that was available.
How many miles would that take up distance-wise, if it was going to cost 17 million dollars to put in sidewalk?
Whether it was sidewalk drainage, retaining walls, removal of, I mean, there's a lot of engineering that had to go on to make that happen, and that's, that's really the issue with that segment, but what is that, like a mile?
One mile is what Katie just said, yeah.
Yeah.
And that was to do sidewalks along both sides, and-
Right.
So some of the things being contemplated are sidewalks on one side, or maybe something that jogs back and forth where appropriate, so.
That just seems astronomical, when I got a bid to put a runway on our ranch, and it was a mile, and it didn't even cost a million dollars, and this is a mile, it's costing 17 million, so it just kind of blows me away that I can't put a sidewalk in, but I could put a runway in for 1/17 of the cost, so.
There's a lot of utilities, drainage, that really costs a lot to move around in there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, with that, have to tap the gavel. Meeting adjourned.